Twenty twenty.
The next one I hate is still moving in.
No.
But they make you walk to the shopping mall, you gotta go anywhere.
Hmm.
The duty state.
Yeah, you have to walk. Walking this far, there's no place anyway.
I've heard your coming in was a little bit.
We got a thirty minute connection.
You know?
Think we're ready, I'll go ahead and share the screen. Looks like we've got all the remote as well. Okay, I think.
Commissioners ready? I will now call to order the December ninth, twenty twenty four Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. The time is five forty-five, forty-six P M, excuse me. Um, Hillary, would you call the role, please?
Eaton.
Here.
Henders. Thompson. Steiger. Samuelson.
Here.
Forrest.
Here.
Reaganator.
Here. Um, I think Elizabeth is joining us on Zoom.
She is on the Zoom meeting.
Did I go too fast?
Elizabeth, can you hear us? If you can hear us, you're unmuted, but we are not getting anything on this end if you're trying to speak. So maybe. Um, try hopping off, hopping back on. Uh, we do have quorum, so we can proceed. Uh, Elizabeth, I guess if you get back on, just say something and we'll note that you're, note that you're with us.
Thanks, Elizabeth. Item number three is the approval of tonight's agenda. Any changes to the agenda for this evening? Hearing nothing, I'll entertain a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda.
Worst motions.
Samuelson, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number four is the approval of the November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four minutes. Any changes to the minutes from the twenty-fifth? Hearing nothing, I'll entertain a motion and a second to approve the November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four minutes.
Even. First, the second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, we don't have any guests that have joined us in person tonight, and I didn't see any on Zoom. Um, so we'll move on to item number six. A public hearing and recommendation of an ordinance amending the zoning code of the city of Norwalk, Iowa to zoning petitions, residential architectural standards, district names, city-owned walls and fences, and P U D amendments. Since this is a public hearing, I'll open that at five forty-eight P M. Elliot or Luke, would you brief us on this item, please?
I think I will handle this one. Um, so this is kind of a hodgepodge of zoning amendments. There are text changes that we've been keeping track of, um, over the really last probably twelve to twenty-four months. Um, so we finally got enough that we wanted to bring forward um, to address. So I'll just run through each one of them. Um, we did bring them together as one kind of package, but if, if there's concerns about something, um, when you decide to do your votes and something, we might just have to talk through how we do that motion so we can keep someone moving forward in that. We wouldn't want all five of them to fail because of an issue with one of them. Um, and so we can definitely do that. So the first one is on zoning petitions. Uh, when we did the uh, rezoning for the legacy circle apartments, um, we had a petition that was filed and that petition was intended. Uh, it was, it was from people that were opposing the rezoning. And our ordinance says that if you apply, uh, you put together a petition of neighboring property owners, you can force a super majority vote at the city council. Um, the other way that can happen is P and Z, if, if you guys didn't support a, a recommendation going forward, you kind of denied it. Um, then that also triggers a, a three quarters vote of city council. Um, what we discovered in that was our current language deviates from what the state enabling languages for zoning petitions. And it caused some confusion as far as what did it mean to be twenty percent of those people? And so reading our code in that situation, twenty percent of the area adjacent within two hundred feet was included the right-of-way. And it was kind of uncertain if it should have or shouldn't have. We interpreted it to say that it did, that two hundred feet did include the right-of-way. Um, the neighboring property owners had a different opinion of that. And because our code wasn't as clear-cut as the state code was, it was a little bit of a anomaly out there, you know, our, our city attorney ended up feeling fine with how we interpreted it. We went forward, we determined that petition didn't succeed, um, and nothing more came of that. But we did think of that, you know, we should probably clean this up and make it match state code. So the highlighted um, language in there is pulled straight from the state code about amendments to zoning ordinance and written protests about them. Um, and our city attorney feels this is much more defensible going forward when we do have a petition. So that's that language. Any questions on it?
My only question would be, could a lot of contracts, if I look at this, um, the twenty percent of more of the area of lots included, those change. And then it goes on to talk about twenty percent of property. Does there need to be more clear definition of exactly how you calculate that percentage?
Um, I don't think so. It's pretty standard, like interpretation of that language has been, um, it's twenty percent of the land, so it's not twenty percent of the owners. Um, maybe the, I guess the language maybe isn't as clear.
Yeah, so I read this, it says lots, so it says twenty percent of the lot.
Yep. So like in a scenario where I own eighty acres and all of you own two acres. Well, I own more than twenty, so basically I get to make that determination. It's, it's, I'm the twenty percent because I'm more than all of these smaller lot owners.
Cause it says lots, now you say acres, so that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I see what you're getting at, Howard. So like, I think what you're reading is twenty percent or more of the um, of the lots, not the area of the lots. So like that, that two hundred feet is gonna cut across the middle parcel lines, right?
Right.
And so it's literally whatever that polygon is, it's within two hundred feet of a parcel limit.
So the, the lot isn't, there are, there are gonna be partial lots included, it's not gonna say, okay, you're at one ninety-five, you're, the entirety of your lot is included.
Yeah, so if that two hundred feet goes through the center of your lot and you own an acre, you are half an acre in that calculation. If you file with that petition.
So it's not.
That makes sense.
Yeah, but it's not number signatures, it's number, it's percentage of area.
Percentage of.
Okay. So, alright.
Eight.
Yep.
Not only lots.
Yep, so if you have, if you have twenty property owners and that two hundred foot boundary cuts a half an acre into all their properties, you got ten acres, right? And it just takes, like, that's the area that.
So it takes two acres out of that ten acres to correct, trigger that. Not, not twenty percent of the owners, individual owners of those, twenty percent of the land area, that's.
If one owner happens to own two of those lots, then that one owner could.
They can trigger that. And that's the way it stated is traditionally interpreted that code or that saying, okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
As long as it's consistent and it's known legally.
Clear as mud.
Okay, so the second one is uh, on architectural standards related to, um, uh, multifamily dwellings. The state passed a law, uh, H F twenty-three eighty-eight, um, which restricts our ability to regulate certain architectural materials for residential buildings. So it's not actually just, uh, um, multifamily, but the state law basically says that we can't um, regulate the material and styles of single-family homes, duplexes, townhomes, and then apartments or condos that have a maximum of twelve units per building. Um, so our current architectural standards, we're pretty fine on uh, single-family duplexes and townhomes. We don't, our, our stuff doesn't unduly restrict the material and style. It just says that you have to have three different types, right? So we've reviewed that with the, the Elliot, myself, and the city attorney and felt like our current code was fine. Where we did run a follow of that is we have a requirement, um, of a certain percentage of material type, uh, classification type for multifamily apartments. And our code right now is just all apartments, no matter what, have to have seventy-five percent, is it? I think seventy-five percent class one and two, I'm sorry, sixty percent, um. Wait, no, forty percent. Get the right percentage down. Um, forty percent of its facade needs to be our higher-class materials, and then those lower-class materials can be sixty percent. So what this amendment does basically is it creates two different classifications. One is an apartment that's twelve units or less, and it basically, and that one says we can't do anything. It's, you're allowed to have, um, just three class one, two, three, or four materials, and there's no percentage requirements. And then there's apartments that are greater than twelve units per building, and then that's what our standard code has been. So.
And this is per building, so if somebody comes in and puts up by, you know, an apartment complex of five different buildings, all consisting of ten apartments in each.
Yep.
They have free reign to go within the different.
Correct.
Classes.
Yep. So practically, I, I can't think of a situation where we've had twelve units or less um, that have been proposed and built. Um, we do in the Lone Tree project, they talked about maybe doing some small apartments. Um, I guess the happy hills.
Units is what they're looking at?
Yeah.
At Lone Tree?
Yep. So we might have some coming forward that won't, we won't be able to look at the architectural standards on. But so far, and I think most typical apartment buildings, we won't, um, see that as a issue. So questions on that?
Or comments?
Our hands are kind of tied with the state law.
Yeah, I think that's.
Our, yeah.
I think that's what it gets you. I guess when this came before council, uh, Ed Cool's comment was, was that some central committee stuff right there? I believe was the exact quote, meaning that state law dictating what we can do locally with all the zoning standards is not something that I think city council really likes, and I don't think this body would really appreciate someone at a state level telling us what to do. From a housing affordability standpoint, I get it, it keeps things there, but I would disagree with the way that the state has gone about this and that. It's just a comment. It's again, it's nothing we can do about it.
Yep. It's a, it's a top-down approach.
It is a top-down approach, and I guess I would make the comment that I don't think we should be surprised that when this continues to happen over the next couple of years, because this is going to continue to happen. Um, my mother, after the school voucher bill passed a couple of years ago, stated that this isn't what she voted for. When, if she had paid attention, she would know that that was coming, and that is indeed what she has voted for. And I guess I would say that over Norwalk, this last election overwhelmingly voted for this type of top-down approach to local government. So I'll stop there.
Let's do a quick check. Elizabeth, are you with us now?
Yeah, I was there, but I couldn't hear anything, so I don't know what was going on.
Well, we got you now, so thank.
Okay, so good points, uh, AJ, I, I would just add to that, that I would expect, um, you know, similar type legislation bit to be proposed in the future regarding zoning. I think it's a trend now that our state, um, legislature will find ways to help the projects they want to help through a zoning process. So we've seen it with fireworks and now with, uh, these standards. So we'll just be prepared and react and amend our codes appropriately when that does happen, if it does. Um, the next one is, um, related to, uh, really just, there's a table in the zoning code that whenever we do a zoning text change, or we, we've had some district changes over the years. Uh, this is a table that just lists out all of our districts, and we've gone through and we've changed the code, but we didn't go and change this district table. So this is really just cleaning that up, um, uh, yeah, I think we had founders districts were, uh, labeled incorrectly in the past. We had created, uh, the new C five district that wasn't in there, and then now most recently the new M two district. So just cleaning that up, um, nothing of real substance there.
Uh, we also did, oh, sorry, you wanna talk about section five too?
Yeah, yeah, the other one, just, uh, what Elliot was just gonna mention was, there was one section in the founders district text itself where it didn't correctly reference the founders district, so we, we changed that. That's what you see is section five in the actual ordinance there. Um, next one is regarding city-owned walls and fences. So the city's working on our entryway wall. And as we, from G A development, have been engaged on the side of that, I've noticed there are some situations where we typically would have told a property owner, no, you can't do that. Um, but we as a city for the beautification of that board or want to do that. So the quick and easy fix to that is to give the city the ability to be exempt from those requirements, and that's what that does. So, um, exempt city-owned walls and fences from height and setback apartments. Sounds pretty straightforward. Appreciate any comments on if we showed or something that, that was our solution to the, uh, issue we were facing along Highway twenty-eight. Um, and then the last one is, uh, related to the P U D amendments. Um, so you guys wanna know this, um, unless you were born one night in Brother's zoning code. But the P U D district actually has its own separate section about how to amend P U Ds. And it provides, uh, for staff approval of certain amendments. Uh, we have never used that because we have always felt, I particularly feel strongly that uh, changes to zoning are important legislative process in the city and that we need to take those things as public hearings before you all and before the council. So anytime the code does give me the ability and Elliot the ability to say that your P U D request, amendment request has to be a rezoning, go through all that. Since we've always done that, and we all feel strongly that that's a process we should follow. This one essentially amends the current P U D modifications section to say all of them are just considered zoning amendments going forward. Um, it's something we've attempted to do for a long time. We don't technically need to do it, because that's how we've always done it. But I just wanna clean it up and make sure that that's the process going forward, so. So that's the five items.
And to answer any other questions on them?
No applicant to comment, no public to comment. Any other questions for Luke from the commissioners before we close the public hearing? Nothing. We'll close the public hearing at six oh two P M. Um, and now we can deliberate on any of the items that are in this section. Um, maybe the way we can start is if anyone has an objection to one of the items, like Luke mentioned, he could kind of set that one out and discuss so we can motion appropriately.
We don't have any grounds to challenge the state on that law, obviously, really, okay?
Privately, you do.
Like, as a city body, we don't.
Me, technically, you could recommend that the city not approve it. And if council decided not to prove it, our law would stand, and then I would enforce that law.
Wait for somebody.
And then we may end up butting heads with what the state law says at some point. I mean, that's how that would work, and then it would go somewhere, and it would be determined by a court which one would apply, and I assume we would not have a good stand in that case, but, you know, I don't know. So we work at your guys' behest, and if that's what you wanna do, that's what we would do.
I'm not gonna nudge the city to get into a lawsuit. I'll let that be council's job. I think our, our objections to that have been well-stated, and I'm sure, like you said, I'm sure they will echo those.
Yeah.
And that's their determination as to if they wanna pick that fight.
Yeah.
I think otherwise they all make sense in terms of cleaning things up, and I know it's a lot more work than just what we heard from you guys tonight, so I appreciate the work that you all have done to get that cleaned up.
Thank you.
Hearing nothing else, I'll, I would entertain a motion to approve the amendments to the ordinance.
Samuelson, a motion.
Need a second.
Hillary, would you call a role, please?
Samuelson?
Aye.
Forrest?
Aye.
Eaton?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Reaganator?
Aye. So we have another public hearing and recommendation for an ordinance amending the zoning code of the city of Norwalk, Iowa to allow for tattoo studios in the C two zoning district. We'll open this public hearing at six oh four P M. Luke or Elliot, would you brief us on this item, please?
I'll let you take it, stop to do the council. That's fine, yeah, I mean, this one, I think most of you guys are relatively familiar with, um, like Howard Brent may have on-boarded since our last application for a tattoo studio. So the way that, uh, way that our zoning ordinance works when considering allowed uses in a district is we have a section for each zoning classification within the text of the ordinance itself that lists out a number of uses that are allowed. Someone wants to open a business in a certain building in that district, they can call me, I can check that list. Yes, you're allowed to do X, Y, and Z. That's the easy way to do it. Um, another thing that sometimes happens, as is the case with tattoo studios, is we define what a tattoo studio is in the main definition section of the ordinance, but we don't have it listed under any of our districts as an approved use. When that's the case, it is considered an unclassified use. Tattoo studio is not the only use that is unclassified. I'm guessing, we haven't numbered them, but there's probably a dozen to two dozen of them that are like that. What happens with an unclassified use, according to our zoning ordinance, is we have the ability to permit them anywhere in any zoning district, including residential, industrial, you name it. It can be permitted if they get a special use permit from Board of Adjustment. The Board of Adjustment process takes, uh, city council out of the equation. Those requests come to Planning and Zoning Commission for a recommendation, and then B O A ultimately decides whether or not those permits are issued. If they are, uh, if they are approved, it is the applicant who is allowed to do that use. Right? That's the way that we've been treating it. So, um, we've had, in my time here, about, I think we've had three separate applicants apply for special use permits to do tattoo studio work. All of them have been in property zone C two, all of them have been approved. I think we had public comment at the first one about five years ago. Um, that was just wild concern slash info gathering, but not opposition. Um, the last two that we've received have had no audience and were, uh, approved relatively, relatively quickly. Both of those happened this year, I think. Um, so we felt that it was appropriate to consider adding it as an approved use within the C two district. Um, that C two district is kind of the one that opens up a lot of the service sector. Um, everything in the C O and C one districts tend to be things like financial services, banks, professional offices, those sorts of things. This falls a little bit more into that retail-ish category, um, so we thought C two made sense, so.
This where hair salons are too, for C two?
Yep. Yep, so similar to actually the, the two permits we approved this year are in a hair salon. Uh, suite in a building, right? Um, so yeah, that's, that's the case. We did note, um, or Luke added in the staff report that permitting this in the C two district would also permit it in C three, M one and M two. Um, sometimes our zoning districts say, you know, M one allows any use permitted in district, whatever. That would be the case here, so.
Would it exclude other, you know, right now, again, if, if somebody wanted to come and say, hey, I've got a shop set up in my basement, and I wanna, I wanna use my special per, or request special use permit to run the business out of my basement in a residential area?
They'd be able to apply for that, yes.
Would they still be able to if we approved this, or would it restrict them to only these?
Just be C two, C three, and one M two. Now, if they wanted to apply for that permit to operate in a residential district, they'd still have to meet the home occupation requirements, which is a completely separate chapter. But this would narrow the allowed space. Right now, theoretically, it could be allowed.
Which in a pretty small hypothetical of somebody who wants to operate one, but just limits that
Mm-hmm.
possibility if we were to allow it.
Yep.
Or to approve it.
Applicant to comment, no public to comment. Any other questions from the commission before we close the pub, public hearing?
Uh, this might be beyond the scope, but I know a lot of tattoo studios also offer piercings. Is there any reason for us to specify that or?
I think our definition already covers that.
Okay.
Let me find that. Yeah, but so we, we define tattoo studio, but then also body piercing studio, and they point to each other, so.
Okay.
It all sets, so body boot piercing studio says C tattoo and vice versa.
Right.
May or may not conclude.
Um, if there are no other questions, we'll close this public hearing at six ten P M. And now, uh, commission, we can deliberate on this item. I think it makes sense. I'm comfortable with limiting it, even, you know, with the point that Carson made about it, sort of limiting in, in home.
I did pull up, um, our home occupations, and because we specifically defined this, it has to be listed out anywhere that it would be allowed. So we, we have home occupations list like fifteen home occupations that you're allowed to do. Tattoo studio is not an approved home occupation, so you would not be allowed to operate a tattoo studio out of your home.
With this, that situation could arise if you have a commercial structure that is now in a residentially zoned district. But as a holdover.
What would be an example of that?
Uh, I, the reverse is actually a little easier to point out, so like the house that's in the process of being torn down at High Road.
Yeah.
Uh, that's residential in a commercially zoned district.
Gotcha.
You don't tend to see it go the other way.
Or you're running clubhouse. You guys went through a rezoning that was zoned residential, because clubhouse for a golf course is allowed in residential. Now they're having it for other.
Yes.
What other types? Do we allow like in-home beauty salon as part of that?
Um, I just, man, I love to find the body piercing thing.
Take care. Would, would the state allow? Cause the state has to license tattoo parlors.
Yeah, I don't know if the state would or not, but your home occupations are mainly like office-based things. You can do like home cooking and baking to sell off premises, so you can't run like a bakery shop in your, but you can bake stuff, take it somewhere and sell it. Um, you can do a barber shop, you can do in-home daycare. Um, you can do some small engine repair work, um, ru- run a bed and breakfast, um, run your part, your contractor business out of there, you can do massage out of there. So there are some that like, I mean, I could, I could see somebody wanting to make the argument that it's not, how different is it from a salon or massage studio? I mean, that, in my mind, those all kind of start mumping together, but right now the code doesn't say.
I guess to address Percy's point, if somebody did wanna open a tattoo parlor at their home, they could come back to us and ask us to amend that section at that point in time.
Yeah, that's what we would recommend instead, they would. They would petition the city to amend the home occupation to allow tattoo studio. I won't, I don't think we should make any change to that today or in the near future without it being a thing that's actually a problem.
So it's far more likely that they, by approving this, were creating a simpler process.
Yeah.
And the outside event that eventually one wants to operate at the home as opposed to not approving it and having to go through that process every time.
Correct.
Yeah.
I know we're not supposed to use outside sources, but, um, it's not permitted. They won't give you a permit or from the state to operate out of your home.
Well, so that even solves the. Yeah. Yep.
Um. Any other questions or deliberation from the commission? If there's nothing, I would entertain a motion to approve, um, the amendment to allow tattoo studios in the C two zoning district.
Worst motions. Need a second.
Hillary, would you call the role, please?
Samuelson?
Aye.
Forrest?
Aye.
Eaton?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Reaganator?
Aye. One more public hearing on an ordinance amending the zoning code regarding requirements for corner lot fences. Um, we'll open the public hearing at six fourteen P M. Um, Hillary, did I give you a closed public hearing on the last one?
Yes, you said six ten.
Okay, good. Sorry.
Okay.
So we'll open this one at six fourteen. Um, Elliot or Luke, would you brief us on this amendment?
I'll do this one, and I'll try my darndest not to, not to be confusing with this. I, I had two people proofread it. Um, numbers in zoning language can get, can get, uh, fun and convoluted, so. Um, essentially, I, I began the staff report here explaining, um, that this is all about fences on corner lots. There are certain permissions that a property owner has with fences broadly, and then. A property owner has with fences broadly and then corner lots kind of change those conditions somewhat, so. Broadly, you can have a four-foot tall fence up to the property line on any property in town. If you're on a corner where sightline issues might be a problem. The graphic at the bottom of the first page illustrates how I would have to. Um, tell them to design a site plan to make sure there's uh visual clearance around a corner. Anything exceeding four feet in height. On any property is not allowed into a front yard by default. What is a front yard? A front yard. Is the yard abutting a public street. Corner lots in zoning terms have two front yards. There are a few rare examples of lots having three front yards in town. One's up on Cassidy Drive. Lots of lawn mowing for that property owner, I'm afraid. At any rate, if you're on a corner lot and you want to build a fence that exceeds four feet in the non-dominant front yard. Your house faces this way, you want to build. A fence on the other side of your house, but abutting the street. You're allowed to do that as long as you maintain. A fifteen-foot setback from the property line. So that's sixteen feet from the sidewalk in most places, right? The idea being, it's your side yard. Functionally, in zoning language, it's a front yard. This allows somebody to be able to fence in more of their backyard. If they want to play area for kids, space for the dogs to run around, et cetera. So that's any fence exceeding four feet in height. A four-foot fence. On this property could go all the way out to a foot from the sidewalk, so. Does that all make sense about about what's allowed on a corner lot? So. I think some of the idea behind that requirement is. In a situation like this, where you have a property owner bring their corner, their their side corner lot fence all the way out to the. To the sidewalk, maybe this guy isn't thrilled about having a privacy fence all the way up the side of his lot. A fifteen-foot setback would at least give them a little bit more clearance. Maybe their driveway could be loaded close to that and they'd have sightline issues. Just a, just a a theory there. Um, also, the pedestrian environment right next to a six-foot fence might feel a little bit. A little bit too, you know, proximal um to some, so. This is an example here in uh in Norwalk of. Of a legal fence and and roughly what that looks like from the top down and um. The main reason that that I'm bringing this to you guys is because I get pushback all the time. From people wanting to build privacy fences in their side yard on a corner lot. And I tell them that they have to have that fifteen fifteen-foot setback. Every single, I'd I'd say three quarters of the permits where I have to deal with this. It's um, it's a, it's a negative to the property owner. Cause they wanna, they wanna even close more of their backyard, right? Fifteen feet, yeah, cause the standard setback is thirty feet. So you're dealing with a front setback on both sides of your house. That's typically going to go right through the center of that setback. I thought that it was worth discussing here at city council if reducing that number in certain cases might be a good idea. The way that I wrote the ordinance. It would not change that rule in a situation like this. But may allow it in a situation where you have corner lots backing up to each other. So I tried to provide some examples here of where that would be. Potentially allowed. So this property owner here has a privacy fence going all the way out to the sidewalk. The way I have, if if we, if we said they could go all the way out to the sidewalk, like I wrote in the draft ordinance. This person could do that and the person to the south would be able to do the same thing. I did not write it in a way that would permit someone whose rear yard backs up to a side lot. Would be able to do it for the reasons I mentioned. Regarding this photo.
Yeah, I think those are two completely different scenarios.
Yeah, side to back versus side, yeah.
Yep, so in my mind, back to back, you're matching sides, right? Instead of matching front and side, I just don't think that's good aesthetically for the person who's off to the side, so. Hopefully that all makes makes sense. Um, this is an example of of a of a currently. Currently non-compliant fence that would remain non-compliant um in the event that the ordinance were changed, so. I think that.
Can you scroll back up to that one? So in this one, it would, you would basically have to move, the non-compliant comes in because it's. The northern part of it would have to come down further.
If they, if they ever tore this fence down, they'd have to move the western. Extreme of the fence fifteen feet. Because they back up to the side yard of that house, right? Now, if if you've ever scrolled through that section of the zoning ordinance, we do have a lot of graphics about things. I figured it was useful to just put an example, a satellite image of. What I'm talking about. I was having trouble finding the legal terms to describe. This situation, but yeah, back of house to back of house on corners. Privacy fences can go, and that number could be on the property line. That could be five-foot setback instead of fifteen. I wrote it as zero. If you guys think that it's worth discussing that number, that's totally fine. But that's what I'm, this is totally staff originated based on customer feedback. So that's kind of all I have. Hopefully that's not too confusing and happy to answer any questions.
Is there value in holding a six-foot fence back from the edge of the sidewalk a minimum set distance?
I think the main thing with it is. Like neighborhood, most of this would come from a consistency of view shed down a street, right? In the the instance where Elliot's first picture, where the guy's fence comes all the way out, like you can see like. All the houses back to the right of that would be. Right in line at that front setback, right? And then you get to the end of the block and now you have this fence that comes out to, right? So there's, there's a lack of consistency there. That's where most of this language probably originated from in. Zoning way back when, when they decided to do this. The other kind of. Thing that I would guess was not really considered back then, but you know, is a benefit, but. And maybe an unintended benefit is vision clearance of driveways coming out, right? Like. This guy's driveway, if his house was flipped and his driveway was right up against that, like that would be a. Exceedingly dangerous scenario in my opinion for them backing out of that and any pedestrians using that. So that scenario, that's kind of probably the. The reason why you would want it setback is more the aesthetic of it. Especially like on those corner lots, like what we've written it to allow it. It's more. There's not a safety concern there because you don't have that conflict with driveways. You don't have that conflict with the vision triangle. So it's more, you know, you would still potentially in that corner lot scenario, maybe on either side of that street, it's just. Regular block, right? So you'd have, you'd be driving down the block and you'd have house front, house front, house front, thirty foot off the setback. And then these corner lots would have their fence all the way out to the sidewalk, so. There's a continuity of aesthetic that. I struggle with sometimes government regulating that side of thing, but that's, that's a a huge part of why setbacks existed. Was to create conformity to a vision along the street and letting things go into that goes against that.
Any fence exceeding four feet. So it could be an ornamental five-foot fence. I know a fair number of Echo Valley folks have those. Yep, I'd point out one other case study. We had a. Application for a variance come in uh earlier this year down in the Founder's District. So in some of the areas where we don't have sidewalk, but we know where property lines are.
Oh, was this the one that came to us? While ago.
So, yeah, so I think. It's one of these properties over here, I think it might have been this one rebuilt his fence. I think it goes out a little bit further than there. You know, and just when there's a sidewalk, it's very obvious where the property line is, right? When we have sidewalk gaps, which we'd like to fill at some point. Uh, the city doesn't really see much of a need to make that guy set his fence back. Twenty-five feet from the curb, if he wants to have more of his space in the backyard filled in.
If you have a six-foot fence or taller than four foot, how far are you allowed to carry that forward on your property? Pretty much the front of the house?
Yeah, a four-foot fence or above, yeah, up to the building face.
Okay, so whatever that front setback is, is you're allowed to do that. But those don't really become an issue for sightlines once you get past the front of the house, cause you've got the thirty-foot setback, right?
Site triangle is twenty-five feet on each side. Forty-five, forty-five, ninety.
I like the logic.
Property owner's side too. I mean, the, in looking at this one specifically. They haven't probably walked that section of their backyard that's fenced off from the other. More than, you know, it's just complete, it renders that portion of the yard.
It's a mowing.
No applicant comment, no public comment. We'll close the public hearing at six twenty-six P M.
Can I make one more real quick point? And not really relevant to the public hearing. Personally, I think a five-foot setback makes sense.
From the sidewalk?
Yes, I wrote it as zero because that matches what we allow for a four-foot fence. I think not having a privacy fence right up against the sidewalk is a good idea.
Well, that's kind of where I was going. For one, it just, when you, back to that first picture you had, when you've got that six foot, that's it's it's a giant wall, but it. Feels more unwelcoming to me. Um, and I guess I have. As a homeowner, I'd be, like winter, you're gonna get a drift up against that if there's a north-facing one of those and it's gonna be a pain in the butt to remove that smell. Where if you move that back five foot, that drift develops in that grass area. I get you're taking away a bit of a yard, but.
Five feet's better than fifteen.
That was kind of my thought is it's kind of a a middle of the road and I guess I would. I would make, when we get to the point where we get there, I guess I would make that recommendation to leave a little bit of a green space between the sidewalk and uh, I guess if you're riding a bike. Down that sidewalk, which you know, if you're a kid that's ten years old riding your bike. Heading, going as fast as you can.
Well, people passing each other.
People passing each other, that really limits that what you can do on a four-foot sidewalk.
Also a handlebar.
Yeah, I guess those kind of things.
By yourself, you get careless and boom.
I'm fully with you on that side foot setback. From the sidewalk.
Dogs in the backyard are getting one.
Are there? I think there's a lot of easements that run through some of those things too, but. If there are easements running through there, they can't be, can they not be within, can you put a fence in an easement?
Depends on, depends on the easement, I mean. Public utility easements are typically the ones that ring. Lots and they tend to be ten feet wide. But they also tend to be accessed by private utility companies almost exclusively. Every time I issue a fence permit. Tell folks, hey, there's public utility easement here, so FYI. If they need to come in and tear out your fence.
They'll do it.
They'll do it.
So they mean, okay, that's, that's what I was getting at. So if somebody does put it, you can put a fence in a right-of-way easement, but if. Somebody needs access to that easement, you're, you're, as a property owner, you're at risk for that.
Yeah, that's the one downside to a five-foot setback if you put it right in the middle of the P U E. But we're at fifteen, could be ten on the edge. One on the edge, like the, it's a balance, right? There's gonna be a trade-off, no matter what, whether it's using all of your backyard, being on the edge of a public utility easement or. Comfort of folks using the sidewalk.
I like the vibe myself. But I liked the the concept of the ordinance to eliminate those, to to specify the back-to-back situation.
But I don't think you're gonna prevent people from.
And in the eight years I've been on here, we've had at least. Four or five years, I feel like have come up that, yeah, we've been asked and typically goes to the, if it's a variance, it goes to. Not us, or always asking given opinion.
So, so the motion would be to amend the ordinance. Incorporating the five-foot setback instead of zero-foot setback.
From sidewalks, yeah.
From sidewalks.
So the way I have it written, fence is not exceeding six feet in height by extend to the property line within the front yard. Being used as a side yard. And the reason I worded it that way is because. Earlier in the section, that phrase is used, so it sounds clunky, but it's reflecting what was written before it.
May extend to within five feet of the property line?
Yeah, that should work.
I'll make that motion.
Forced a second.
Hillary, would you call the roll, please?
Forrest? Eaton? Thompson? Samuelson? Reaganator?
George isn't, hasn't joined us tonight for a city council update, um, but I saw we have Holly on, um. What economic development do you have for us, Holly?
Yeah, thank you, Megan. Hello, everyone. I have a few updates for you guys. Um, if I miss anything that you've heard about or you have questions about. Um, feel free to ask, but a couple of weeks ago, we had the Field House grand opening event. It was a wonderful event. A lot of people came. Um, we had some good news coverage, so thank you to anybody in this group that was able to attend that. Um, the city entrance monument welcome sign at Highway five and twenty-eight will be installed um early spring. So it's been designed, approved and all of that. And it's part of the kind of Highway twenty-eight improvement corridor, which includes the wall project, so that'll all look great when it's done. Um, some business updates. So we have two properties on the west side of twenty-eight that are being purchased for um redevelopment. Which is pretty exciting, uh, fourteen twenty-one and thirteen oh five. So you'll hear more about those plans um really soon, but that's good. Uh, affinity credit union closed on their land in Norwalk Central, um, the southern parcel along Highway twenty-eight. Um, Sherwin-Williams is no longer looking at the parcel, just north of affinity, kind of south of that, you know, subway Mahalo's building. Maybe give some more updates about that later, but just so you know, they're not going in there as of right now. It's also true that Mahalo's did close. Um, it was purely a business decision, nothing to do with Starbucks or competition or the city or anything else. That space, yeah, that's gonna backfill quickly. We have people kind of lined up for existing spaces and retail centers. Um, we're already working on a couple of new prospects for it. It's just the nature of small business. It's unfortunate, but you know, it's a tough industry. Um, Christian Brothers Automotive plans to be open early spring, so it'll be great for our residents. We have two new uh food and beverage businesses in negotiations and under contract in Norwalk Central. Cooper's and Mullet's openings are both being pushed back a little bit. Both had hoped to be open this month, but delays are due to like restaurant equipment and internal construction timing. So we'll announce updated dates after Christmas for both of them. And then uh press release will come out this week announcing Sportsplex Norwalk, so. The facility, the big building next to the city's field house, so the Sportsplex building. Uh, within that greater facility, the larger facility, the Sportsplex business entity itself will have space. It'll have eleven thousand square feet. And uh it's pretty cool. It's indoor turf, multi-sports training programs, really cool concept and opportunities for athletes in the region. So they hope to be open in January. Then also in that same building will be Ember Market, Penn High Golf, as you know, Remax, Vivid Life Spa. And a few others that we'll announce soon, and of course Mullets. The Commercial Outlaw east of the Sportsplex building is now on the market. It's about one point three-three acres. So we are looking for end users or buyers that will fit well kind of in the sports campus and Norwalk Central concept. So anything, you know, food-related, recreation, entertainment, sports, fitness, those industries is what we're looking for to help fill that. Um, really good lot. And then north of Chatham, the Nutra Smoothie Cafe and Sports Affiliates building site is under construction. They'll have a cafe, smoothies, full bakery. And a supplement store, so they're doing well. The Hilton True Construction is going well. Also, you may have noticed that their elevator shaft is up. So kind of once that's up, it seems that, you know, hotels move a little bit quicker in their construction once that kind of centerpiece is is underway. Uh, they plan to be open by fall of twenty twenty-five. The Dunn Industrial Flex Buildings, so the two light industrial buildings along Delaware. And the Dunn Industrial Park, they only have, I think, twenty-two hundred square feet left. Of the both of those um larger buildings, so they're about ninety percent full. You know, we just announced H D Sports, which is another indoor sports training facility and announcing Ocean Athletics, which is a cheer dance and gymnastics. Um, studio, so there's also two other businesses that'll announce within those same couple of buildings along Delaware, so they're doing really well on that development. We're working with a larger restaurant, a medical facility, a pharmacy, a third hotel, a tunnel car wash, a large retail and fitness center. We're working with a larger restaurant, a medical facility, a pharmacy, a third hotel, a tunnel car wash, a large retail and fitness center and a service center. All kind of north of the Colonial and Turnberry areas. Uh so you'll be hearing lots about that in the next uh several months. And then the Southwest Development Corridor, that's progressing very nicely. Council just approved the next stage of the. North River Sewer Project, which will, you know, ultimately serve thousands of acres in the area and very crucial to our. Tech data center industrial quarter plans. Our development group that's under contract for three hundred acres south of Delaware is also moving along pretty rapidly. We're in the development agreement negotiation stage now with them. The timing for their project lines up with um. The thirty-two hundred plus acre annexation uh project, so they'll close on the land. We'll go through the public urban renewal area amendment, TIF area creation and development agreement procedures all around the same time in late February or March. Uh so this project, once built out, is projected to be valued at about a half a billion dollars, which is approximately nineteen million in new property taxes. You know, so that's just one of the projects underway. If you factor in all of the other commercial industrial developments. Um that are being worked on right now, it kind of paints a pretty positive picture for our future city, county, school budgets. The ability to provide services and amenities that everybody really wants and needs. So I know there's a lot of concern with legislation. City budgets, things coming up that we're not completely um prepared for yet or. Uh know quite how we're gonna handle all that, but at least we know in our community, we have a lot of um. Things in the hopper, a lot of developments underway that will provide a lot of really good value and tax tax um benefits. So and then lastly. Um last month, Michael Foods won the state of Iowa's Economic Impact Award. This is the second time for the Norwalk facility. And they've only been in Norwalk for a short amount of time, so that's a really prestigious award to win in the state. Difficult criteria, so if you see anybody from Michael Foods, congratulate them. And then the Greg Young Sports Campus, which is owned by Sports Plex and Heartland. Uh they just won a countywide innovation award for their high tech, you know, first in the nation components of the campus. And then um very lastly, this coming spring will begin working with Windsor Windows. On their large scale expansion that would also double their footprint and square footage similar to Michael Foods. So that's just a few of the things that we're working on, but again, feel free anytime to reach out, ask me any questions. I'll tell you anything I know. But I'm happy to answer any questions now as well.
There an opening date for, I know you mentioned um Mullets and and Cooper's, what about the uh one right next to? The parlor and tattoo studio, the name's escaping me right off.
Oh, Sunset Lounge?
Yeah, Sunset Lounge.
Yeah, so we've been kind of staying in touch with them and it looks like they're going to hope for the next few weeks or early. Uh January, but as soon as they have a solid date, we'll definitely get that announcement out.
Didn't we approve a patio?
Not pass.
Board of adjustment. Board of adjustment denied it.
But it's it's kind of a nice, cool upscale type of a cocktail bar, so a lot of people will like that.
I didn't decide there, it looks it looks pretty nice.
Yeah, I saw pictures of it. It looks cool.
Any other questions for Holly from the commission? Thanks for joining Holly and for all the updates.
Yeah, thank you. You're welcome.
Um Luke, any community development update for us?
Sure, just a few things I'll run through quick. Permit wise, uh fifteen residential permits in November, so that puts us to two twenty-seven total for twenty twenty-four already. Uh so that's an above average year trending towards about two forty total, which would have us kind of towards the high end of permit years in the past. Ten years, so uh we're happy that we're staffed back up to accommodate all of those permits. And in addition to doing all that residential, we also have record commercial permits. Um a lot of the permits we've been working on lately have been in the Sports Plex and Dunn Industrial Buildings. Um all the users that uh Holly mentioned there um are going through their permitting processes and we. Uh get those through and get them going as quick as we can. Um the North River Interceptor also uh as was mentioned by Holly was approved by council to start that process, that project. Around nine point nine million dollar um initial investment in the city and sewer there. Um and just like at council, I just wanted to circle back to that project again as a really great example of. The city's leadership, your guys' leadership, our staff's leadership in setting the city up. For future success. Um you know, when I started here ten years ago. We had a whole different plan of what South Norwalk might look like and what our investments in that area might be. And you know, through the council's goals of preserving and improving why we want to live and work in Norwalk. And their vision for that and our comprehensive plan and our P and Z's work through that. You know, we've really changed the idea of what Norwalk could be and it's exciting to begin that process and and have some potential big users. Lined up to take advantage of that right away and um it's gonna be a. An exciting change for the city and hopefully a positive one. And then lastly, uh last Thursday, I participated, participated in the Des Moines MPO's workshop uh for the. Metrowide Safe Streets for All grant. Um essentially, the US DOT put out this new grant program. Called Safe Streets for All. Um it's two components. One is you have to do a plan. For safe streets and then there's implementation grants and the the metrowide uh. Suburbs in Des Moines are in the process of doing a metrowide. Plan and then um also been pairing that up with a grant that will apply for this um spring, so. Lot of work to go on with that initially uh and and going on into the spring, but. A a detail that was given to us as part of the intro into this work session, I thought was worth sharing. The US DOT's uh Safe Streets for All thing is uh working under an initiative called Zero Fatalities. Or Project Zero, the idea that uh we shouldn't have any uh automobile fatalities, right? We we don't tolerate them in other industries and other ways that we travel, but um we seem to tolerate them in vehicles. And the step that they gave us was uh that there were forty-five thousand vehicle fatalities last year, which is equivalent of. Uh four seven thirty-sevens crashing every week. And we know that if we had four seven thirty-sevens crashing every week, it would be a major crisis in this country. For the F M A and airlines and air travel, but we accept it as part of our daily commute. Um so just bring that up to. Really mention that, you know, we're starting to treat road safety with the same importance that we've treated other transportation mode safety. Um and you know, there's things we can do about that and that's what this whole planning process is and this whole grant is. Um so I'm excited to see where that leads.
Thank you. Um any update for us, Elliot?
Not really a substantive item, but just to go off of Luke's last points, something I saw a post on. Social media that kind of uh spoke to the issue he was just talking about in a way that really resonated with me. And that was um the idea of holding local news agencies accounts uh accountable when talking about accidents. So there was a fatality this morning on in West Des Moines, right? I believe, I think it, I think the post got taken down. But I believe one of the initial reports on it, the very first thing they led with was the delay. We're talking about fatalities and life altering events for two other people. In terms of being a few minutes late to work, I think is kind of kind of gross. Frankly, I know that the news agencies have their jobs to do. I think there's a better way to do it. And so.
The traffic moved fairly quickly. I passed right by it.
But that that point being brought out by some keyboard warrior, uh I think is actually true and. Uh I've been thinking about that, so just wanted to.
They may not have known when they reported.
Sure, certainly. You couldn't tell it was a car.
Those little cars are great for gasoline and mileage.
They're bad in safety because guys like me drive.
Because of the vehicular arms race, that's why they're not. Anyway, that's all I have and uh. I don't know for sure if we're gonna have items next meeting, but wanted to. Check on attendance just in case, so let you know.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, well, there we are. We're almost there.
Like uh Elliot mentioned, our next meeting will be December twenty-third at five forty-five if it's necessary. And I will now entertain a motion and a second to adjourn.
Ten seconds.
All in favor, say aye.